All right, everybody. Welcome, and I'm going to call this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees to order, and we will start with our roll call. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam President. President Taylor?
I am here.
Vice President Nicolet?
Good afternoon.
I am here. Trustee Church?
Here via Zoom.
Trustee Mayberry?
Just there.
Trustee Rodriguez?
Here.
And Trustee Smith?
Here.
Oh, wait. And our student representative Ivy Batmal.
Here.
Trustee Ivy, welcome.
We have a call, Madam President.
All right, fantastic. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We're going to go to our Pledge of Allegiance, and we're going to have -- do we have saying, "Believe us in the Pledge of Allegiance" last time?
Sure. No, she did not.
Oh, that's right, because she came in afterwards. So our new deputy superintendent will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Deputy. Okay, we will go right to our consent agenda. These items that are typically are the -- oh, yeah, and we're going to -- before we approve the agenda, right, before we're going to -- staff is requesting that Agenda Item 5.03, which is Presentation, Discussion, and Possible Action, to consider approval of the naming of the renovated Athletic Field at Incline High School Ridge Line or the more to -- they're asking that this item be pulled at this time and be returned to a future agenda of the Board of Trustees for consideration. So 5.03 will be pulled. That's right, we don't approve that anymore. Okay, 5.03 is not on the consent agenda, but Agenda Item 5.03 will be pulled until a later meeting. Okay. Thank you for flagging that for me, JJ. Okay, a consent agenda, we're looking for the consent agenda. These are items that are typically routine in nature, so therefore they can be considered as one action, the whole idea is without extensive hearing. However, I think we do have a couple of items that Trustee Church would like to pull for individual consideration, and so as he says, one or two of those, whatever it is that he has, will ask staff to be prepared to ask -- to answer any questions, and ask Trustee Church if they have his questions ready to go. Trustee Church?
Thank you. Just one, 2.13, which is, I think, $3.7 million. I think that's pulled. And we'll comment under consent on 2.14, but I don't need to pull it.
I'm sorry, I just want to make sure. Give me those one more time, Trustee Church.
Just 2.13, just that one. It's $3.7 million in devices, and if it's okay, I will comment on 2.14, but I do not want to pull it.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. So what's before the board at this time, before we take any action on this? Do we have any public comment on the consent agenda? We do not. Thank you, JJ. Okay, looking for the consideration of the board for consent agenda items 2.02 through 2.12, and then 2.15 through 2.21. Moved by --
Madam President, should I comment now or after?
Did I get the numbers wrong?
He wants to comment.
He wants to comment on 1.4. So we can do that without it being pulled separately? Okay, hang on just a moment, Trustee Church. Let me just correct my request and then ask Trustee Rodriguez to reconsider his motion. We're going to then look at -- because you want a comment on 2.14, we'll just do that before the vote, as opposed to pulling it for individual consideration. Thank you, counsel. So we're looking at consent agenda items 2.02 through 2.12, and then 2.14 through 2.21. Thank you. There's a motion then from Trustee Rodriguez. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Clerk Minneto. And before we take a moment, we will have some discussion, and I believe you have discussion or comment, Trustee Church, in on 2.14?
Yeah, very briefly, that's on risk management, and it's fine. We talked about it at the board policy meeting. I do think it's a little vague, that just maybe down the road, with a brand-new superintendent, she may want to reevaluate that and bring it back at some time, but there's nothing wrong with it, and therefore I'm not going to pull it. I just think down the road, we may want to look at a little more detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Church. So back here to the motion on the floor, which is 2.02 through 2.12, and 2.14 through 2.21. There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Opposition? Okay, the motion carries. It is unanimous. Let the record show that it is unanimous, so we'll go right to Consent Agenda Item 2.13. We're going to ask staff, I think -- okay, we have staff coming into position right now. So Trustee Church, we have staff, the agenda item is Approval to Purchase Student Devices in the Amount of $3.7 Million as Part of the Information Technology Device Refresh Program that was approved at the June 21, 2022 Meeting of the Board of Trustees. Trustee Church?
Thank you. If I could just basically have them explain the who, why. Unless I missed it, I didn't really see a staff report. I just saw like a one- or two-page ed. So if they could just explain the details of that, please.
There is a bit. Did you see where it said Purpose Summary? There is a staff report here on that. Did you catch that, Trustee Church? Has a little background information, as well as a purpose summary that is there, and perhaps your questions go beyond that?
Yeah, it seems a little big. Staff could just kind of explain to myself, as well as the public. Anytime we're looking at some amount like that, I'd like to put it on the record essentially what we're getting for our money.
And so that's your question, what we're getting for our money? I just want you to have a question for staff, sir, so they can be directed to what you'd like to hear.
Well, essentially, if they could explain exactly what this is, did it go out to bid, and is this a one-time purchase? So if they could just start with those three questions about the purpose.
Okay, we'll start with that. Thank you very much, please.
Sure. Good afternoon. Joe Diego, so I'm the IT Director for the Washoe County School District. I think I'll just start with the summary that was in the submission, which was, "The Office of Information Technology seeks approval for the purchase of 10,467 student laptop computers. The purpose of this expenditure is to sustain an annual refresh cycle for the Washoe County School District's student technology. The plan will continue to replace 20% of student computers based on an 80% of each school's enrollment. The total cost for the 22-23 school year purchase is $3.7 million, with any future funding to be used for iPads for K2. The Washoe County School District last year initiated a central funding computer refresh initiative. The process allowed the district to maintain usable and reliable devices and allow an increased level of security around the device and the students using them. Our goal is to establish a system that will provide a functional device to support education, as well as to build a system that allows for the control around the procurement of new devices and their proper removal of old devices that may be a security risk." There were some questions as to the whether this went out to bid, did not go out to bid. We did meet last year when we did the refresh with purchasing, and it wasn't our requirement, so they gave us the option to either send out four quotes or to do a bid process. So we went ahead and initiated three. We reached out to three different vendors and asked them to submit a quote based on five -- and based on five different criterias, which was the cost, availability, the adherence to specifications, prior experience and performance with the vendor, the understanding of that vendor, and its understanding of the district, and their financial stability. And we rated them, and HP was the one that came out, so that was the X360 device.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Diego. Trustee Church?
I think that covers it, yeah. That's fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just want you to stay right there, just in case the trustees have come in. Not so fast, not so fast. Thank you. Do you have public comment on this, JJ?
John Appolito.
Welcome, Mr. Appolito.
Thank you. My name is John Appolito. I'm with Protect Nevada Children. There's very little upside and incredible amount of downside to increasing screen time, social media, video game exposure, screen addiction, and pornography to students starting in kindergarten, yet this is exactly what this board will likely approve in a few minutes. The district recently admitted that last school year, elementary students were using their district-issued devices to access pornography. They say the problem is corrected, but they won't say, one, if parents of the elementary school students who were watching Pornhub pornographic videos were notified, and, two, the district won't say if students are still able to access explicit pornographic photos via a Google search, as two parents have recently told Protect Nevada Children. In November 2018, we sent this board an excerpt from Dr. Cardenas's book, "Clo Kids," stating, quote, "Excessive screen exposure can neurologically damage a young person's developing brain in the same way that cocaine addiction can," end quote. A year and a half later, Jessica, a mother of four district students, came and told this board that is exactly what happened to her son. First, he became addicted to screens, then drugs, then overdosed. The parents of means were able to commit him to a drug treatment facility. You can find a direct link to Jessica's comments to this board at the top of our Facebook page, Protect Nevada Children. The problem is, the district is causing or contributing to screen addiction and young children access in pornography, and will not take responsibility for the same. Today, I'm submitting a bunch more information that the district and the board will likely ignore. You can find the information under Item 2.13 on today's agenda. Some of the articles included are Reno Gazette Journal psychiatric -- Adolescent psychiatric nurse practitioner Rothman from Renowned article titled "Screen Time Causing Exacerbating Childhood Psychiatric Disorders." Business Week: Bill Gates and Steve Jobs Raised Their Kids Tech-Free, and It Should Have Been a Warning. Market Watch: Screens Are Hooking Kids on Digital Heroin. New York Times: A Dark Census About Screens and Kids Begins to Emerge in Silicon Valley. Education Week: A Call for Fewer Screens in the Classroom. Scientific America: Students Are Better Off Without a Laptop in the Classroom. You can find 1,500 of us on Facebook at Protect Nevada Children. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Appolito.
You're welcome.
That's all I have. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll bring the conversation here to the dais. We're looking at Agenda Item 2.13, as stated, which is a part of the refresh program that was approved at our meeting in June. Looking for any comments, questions, or a motion, if that's the pleasure of the board. Okay, motion from Trustee Rodriguez, is there a second? Second from Dr. Nicolet. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Opposition? Okay, the motion carries, and the record shows that it is unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Diego and Mr. Cersei. Okay, we're going on to Agenda Item 3.01. Agenda Item 3.01 is Presentation, Discussion, and Possible Action by the Board of Trustees to approve the proposal for the Washoe County School District's Build Draft Request. This is our continuing conversation on the BDR, as allowed by the Nevada Revise Statute 218D.205 for the 2023 Nevada Legislative Session, as either modernizing educational statutes or school safety. And this is for action in our deadline. Now, this is September 1, so if we're going to have a BDR, then we do need to take action on that as of today, unless there will be a special meeting. Okay, we'll turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Enfield.
Thank you, President Taylor, and good afternoon, everybody. So per the direction that the trustees gave me at the last meeting, which was to explore the possibility of a BDR around safety and security, or one around modernizing statutes to allow for better efficiency and innovation and flexibility for school districts. In talking with staff, the safety and security avenue seemed to be one that would simply have too high of a price tag, and staff also felt that there were other avenues that we might want to pursue at the district level before going there. So with that, we pursued the modernizing statutes. And if the trustees will recall, I just want to give a little bit of context. And Trustee Church rightly pointed out that there hasn't been a lot of time to engage and get input on this. Unfortunately, tomorrow will be Week Eight for me, and I came in having lost Lindsey, unfortunately. So new superintendent, new to this process, without a legislative staffer, and so we were a little bit behind the eight ball. And I just want to own that and acknowledge it, and this is certainly in the next round, this won't be how we do things, but we've made the best of it. And fortunately, we have a brilliant deputy superintendent in Dr. Keough, and I asked her to, and I'm going to ask her to actually come up and share with you, our best thinking on the BDR requests that would allow for that statute modernization, and what that actually would mean for school districts. And it's a long game, not a short game, so brace yourself. But I'd like to ask Dr. Keough to come up to the table, if you will.
Fantastic. Dr. Keough, welcome.
And this is her big debut, so welcome, Dr. Keough.
First day of the school board meeting.
Thank you. Deputy Keough, for the record, good afternoon, honorable members of the board. As Superintendent Eber -- sorry.
That's okay.
That's a different superintendent, for the record, just for the state.
I am laughing.
For the state, it's your first meeting, so we'll give you a pass. Only because you called this -- what you call this? Honorable. You call this honorable, so you got a pass from that.
Yeah, you got a one.
Everybody sit up a little bit, sit up a little bit on that.
I am laughing, because I really did, I had to practice also saying, "I am the Deputy Superintendent for Washoe County School District," right? Because I'm still, I was still used to saying something else. So apologies, Superintendent Enfield. Pursuant to NRS 218D.205, the Board of Trustees of Washoe County School District may request the drafting of not more than one legislative measure for a regular session, as you know. Build draft requests, BDRs for the 2023 Legislative Session must be submitted no later than September 1, 2022. In alignment with the priorities that have been identified by you a few weeks ago, and also supported by superintendents across the state, the proposal is to submit a BDR focused on modernizing educational statutes to allow for innovation and to strengthen system-level coherence and alignment across the Nevada education system. The intent is to ensure that public education funds are used strategically on what works to improve student and school outcomes, and so that we are improving effectiveness and efficiencies across the entire system. Now, there is an immediate need to do this for updating the statutes and the policies to meet current needs within the district, and of course, to also plan strategically for the future of the education system, to build an education system that to meet our greatest aspirations for all students. This is a real opportunity for Washoe County School District to build those flexibilities that allow for strategic, intentional, and thoughtful planning and monitoring at the system level, that ensures that all of our students graduate with the skills they need to be globally prepared and engage community members. Now, the core features of the BDR would be to want, really, to create a commission and work groups comprised of local experts, district leaders, state leaders, and critical stakeholders across the state, to study the educational statutes and provide recommendations and areas for prioritization. As Superintendent Enfield has shared, this is a medium-to-long-term plan to set us all up for success and to move this process forward. Okay, so really, they would be setting this up through, from the end of legislative session in June 2023, and typically, they need six to nine months. Okay, so I'm thinking right now, this is going to be a long-term, they need to get into this to really see what it's going to look like and what we need to do. So that brings up us through February, March 2024. Within the commission, we would be facilitating work groups that actually work with the state to draft revised educational statutes and create any necessary regulations. Again, so this is for the next two years. The core tenets, there are four core tenets that Dr. Enfield and I have discussed with staff. One of the core tenets is, again, innovation, and it would not just be academic and SEL and mental and behavioral health needs, but it'd really be kind of the comprehensive package for students and for our educators. In particular, this allows for greater flexibility to meet our local needs. Now, there are different parts of Washoe County School District, right? We have actually some rural areas, we've got different grade levels, and we've got different parts of the city for these schools. So we really need to give, provide flexibility at the local level, so that there's an opportunity to innovate. So that's really kind of core tenet number one. And then really calculated risk-taking. And the reason why I'm saying that is innovation is not just for innovation's sake. We're going to talk about core tenet number two and three, which are built upon this innovation core tenet. Core tenet number two, system-level coherence and alignment. And that's really an opportunity for the district to coordinate efforts to maximize effectiveness and efficiency. It also allows us to build capacity and pipelines over generations, over multiple years. And these are the features, system-level coherence and alignment, these are features in high-performing systems, right? So we are up, we are up and rising as a district. This is an opportunity for us to deeply embed those core tenets of high-performing systems over the long term, for multiple generations. Core tenet number three, evidence-based interventions and outcomes, really using evidence, using data and research to drive our decision-making. And I heard Trustee Church ask, you know, what are we going to get for our money? This is really our commitment to spending our money, public education funds, on what works to improve student and school outcomes, right? So this is going to be aligned to a continuous improvement process, which essentially means we identify those needs, we prioritize those needs, we implement interventions and supports, and then we monitor if it's working or not, and we make appropriate adjustments so that we can continue to improve moving forward. That also means that we examine data systems, make sure that we are building data systems that connect and speak to each other from the pre-K level to 16, right? We want to know whether or not our investments are actually leading to improved life outcomes. It's not just academic outcomes, it is life outcomes. We are building lifelong learners and community members, and so it's not just about the pre-K through 12 education system. And I will say, it's really important for us to build a local evidence space, and so focusing on outcomes and evidence-based interventions actually help us to have proof points from Washoe County School District, so that if and when we ever ask for more money, we can say to parents, like myself, we can say to community members, "We were really smart with how we spent our money before. We have the proof points to demonstrate to you that we spent our money on targeted supports that actually improve the lives of kids and help to improve effectiveness of our educators and our support staff." Core tenet number four is reducing burden and streamlining work across the district. Now, that would mean, and we've heard oftentimes about unfunded mandates, this is an opportunity to find solutions and fix, perhaps, any of these unfunded mandates. And then, as you probably have seen over time, some of our current statutes were created in isolation, right? They don't speak to each other. And so as we think of ourselves as system-level leaders, this is an opportunity for us to make sure that things are not piecemealed, so that they actually fit together, and we are coordinating efforts across different industries and across different stakeholder groups, so that we can really build strong lives for our children. And sometimes the mandates are really burdensome, because what it looks like at the school level or the district level could be, and I know this because I just came from the state, we mandate through state statutes that districts send us all of these reports. So it could mean that schools have five different plans that they are beholden to. It could be a district sending us 35 reports over a year, every year, right? So this could be repetitive work that we must address, and it's an opportunity for us to streamline the work, so that our people who power the system can spend their time on what they need to spend their time on, which is focused on improving student and SEL outcomes for our students across the district, as well as supporting our educators. So the purpose of this BDR is to make recommendations to adjust our current statutes and policy frameworks, again, to meet our current needs, prepare for the next 10 to 20 years. So this is a long-term strategic play. This allows us to examine existing state laws, the regulations, policies, and make smart, strategic recommendations for planning and for budgeting that increase flexibilities for districts and schools. Now, some of the topics that may be addressed, it's not limited to this, but what we've heard within Washoe County School District, and of course, across the state too, is that the topics at the top of mind include competency-based education. Okay, so again, this is, for example, moving away from seat time and providing students other ways to demonstrate proficiency. Work-based learning, again, these are educational programs that combine classroom instruction with practical work experience related to the program of study. This with career and technical education, again, combining academic and technical skills with the knowledge and training that they need to succeed in today's labor market. Dual enrollment is a topic, right? High school students taking college classes while still enrolled in high school, STEAM, STEM, robotics, other elective offerings. This could be examining the educator and support staff pipeline, so that there are recruitment and retention issues across Washoe and across the state. And so this really opens up the door for greatest flexibility for our local experts to examine, what do we need to do to bring the statutes in line with what the current needs are, while also making sure that our students and educators get what they need to be vastly successful right now, and for the next 10 to 20 years. So I'm going to end by briefly just saying, the BDR, this proposed BDR builds upon work that the district has already done for years. It is, it builds upon the work that district leaders across the state and state leaders have invested in over years. So this is highly likely to be well-supported across the state, not just from district leaders and school leaders, but also from legislators and family and community members who've been deeply engaged in this work. Thank you so much for your time, and I welcome any questions that you might have.
Okay, thank you very much. We hear from the superintendent, and then we'll take a public comment before we bring it back to the trustees.
Thank you, President Taylor. One week on the job, folks. So I want to thank Dr. Keough for this, and just to give the board, trustees, a little more context. If you recall, given the tight timeframe and wanting to make sure that we were putting our time and energy into something that could really bear fruit, not just for the students in Washoe County School District, but students all over Nevada, remember that Churchill County or Carson County, or, you know, wherever a student resides today in the state could be one of our students tomorrow. So putting forward a BDR that would have an impact for students across the state was important. So to that end, I think you recall that I looked at the priorities that NAS, the Nevada Association of School Superintendents, put together, and this was one that my fellow superintendents from across the state had identified as a need. And the specific examples that Dr. Keough laid out were ones that my fellow superintendents had said they were also keenly interested in seeing how we could advance and better support. And so while I understand this is likely quite different from BDRs of the past, that I'm guessing were a little more narrow, perhaps a little more time-bound, this is really a long game, but I believe strongly in conversation with the team and with Dr. Keough and the brief conversations I've had with my fellow superintendents, that this could really put the foundation in place for us to do our work more efficiently and effectively for the sake of our kids. So that's just a little more context, and with that, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Let's have a public comment, and then we'll bring it back to the board, starting with Trustee Smith.
John Appolito.
Welcome back, Mr. Appolito.
Thank you. My name is John Appolito with Protect Nevada Children. On the BDRs, I just wanted to check in with you guys and see, in 2019, Protect Nevada Children had two BDRs in. One had a Democrat and one had a Republican sponsor. The one with the Democrat sponsor, we had a really good BDR in. 12 people in the audience and entities spoke in favor of it, only one entity spoke against it, and that was Washoe County School District. And that bill would have protected students' privacy. And the part that the school district didn't like, and the reason I'm saying this now is with the new superintendent, maybe you wouldn't oppose it this time, maybe we could get it through. I just talked to Senator Dennis the other day. I just talked to Senator Dennis the other day. The part that I wrote, the best part of the bill, would have allowed parents to opt out of their children logging into third-party education vendors and sharing information data in schoolwork. And Clark County School District was for it, the State Teachers Union was for it, most, all the senators seemed to be for it, everybody was for it except Washoe County School District. So if we were to bring that bill back again, my question to you, Dr. Enfeld, is would the district oppose it again? And again, that was a Democrat who brought it for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Epalito.
You're welcome.
Trustee Smith, any more public comment?
That's all I have.
Okay, I thought you said there was one. Trustee Smith.
Thank you, President Taylor. Thank you so much for that, Dr. Kio. Okay, first one's an easy one. Can you, I was taking notes. Can you reread the fourth tenet? I think I got three of the four words.
Reduce burden and.
Reducing burden and streamlining.
Work.
The work, yes. Okay. Thank you. So you definitely have my attention with this. I think that this all is great, particularly around the evidence-based interventions and the reducing burden and streamlining work, because every teacher that I have spoken to in the past year talks about drowning under the administrivia of it, in addition to other staff. If you could just quickly revisit, so if this were to pass, and we feel confident that it is, this would go into effect late summer of 2023, the group would be formed and they would start the work of doing this, this research. Can you remind me again, who would be doing that, or is that kind of nebulous and the legislature would decide exactly who's a part of making those, those decisions? The reason why I ask is because I want to make sure that the voices who are really close to teachers and understanding what they're living with, in addition to our administrative staff that are putting together these reports, that we're getting all those right voices.
Thanks, thank you so much, trustee Smith. So the process would be for Washoe County School District to work in collaboration with the state. Technically, the state drafts the bill, but it is our intention to be actively involved so that we can then say, these are the right people at the table who need to be there so that we can actually push forward the work. This, and I, I said commission, but it really is a commission that, that works.
[laughing]
And, 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 right? Yeah, a, a working group. This is a real working group, because there's a lot of work that has to happen. So this is not just dignitaries. These are actual, like, the experts who say, this is how the bill has been implemented, this is how it's impacted my life as an educator in Washoe County School District, and I have really smart recommendations around how to improve this so that we can still, right, so that we can continue to improve. So thank you for that question. That is something that, that Washoe will certainly, the school district will certainly pay attention to so that we make sure that educators and, and folks who are most impacted by the work are represented within these working groups.
That is phenomenal. The next one is more of an observation because of where you join us from, it feels like you would be a really great champion for this because you have those state-level relationships. I, I mean, maybe I'm stating the obvious, but this is quite amazing to have a deputy superintendent with this background, but it feels like you would also be a powerful part of making all of this happen.
I, thank you, trustee Smith, again. I am, I am very excited to support, this is from the state perspective, when I was at the state, please know, Washoe County School District has a very strong reputation as being, the entire team is known as being incredibly strong. And so I am honored and thrilled to, to join this very strong team, and I would be happy to work alongside Dr. Enfeld and of course, the entire team and this board to champion this BDR.
Thank you, Dr. Kio, and thank you, thank you, trustee Smith. Just a couple of observations from, from my part, and I see you reaching in, Vice President Nicolet. One, thank you, thank you for breaking down the four tenets so we can see kind of what does that look like. And really, the, my, my, the first question I wrote down was, was, okay, so who would do this work in, in creating a commission or a work group or whatever? I'm not going to say a commission that works. They should say a commission or a work group or something. And I do think that it's really critically important, and in some cases, we've seen this happen from the legislate, from the legislature, that it's, it's people, it's parents, it's educators, it's even a couple of students you can look at, because if we're looking at the, the, the statutes and, and the regulations that are there that need to be updated and those who are impacted by it, it just makes sense that all of those voices absolutely have to be there, really from across the state. The, the other observation I have on this is because it's something that, that has been on the radar, if you will, for the state superintendents, I think it's something that would be really highly likely to get the, get the support, because at, at the end of the day, you start counting votes, right, when you're, when you're in Carson. And if we, we want to have things that are not so Washoe-targeted if we don't need to, because then it's harder to get votes, because others don't understand the issues specific to our district. But if, as we come up with things such as the, the, what did we do, the, the learning, the, last time, what did we do, JJ, the learning, student learning SLOs, right? Something that, that impacted every, every district in the state, so we can get statewide support for something like that, and then work it through the legislature and the negotiation and so on. This sounds like something similar to that, and that there's really good reason for other districts to have an interest and jump on and say, yeah, we think that would be great. And of course, you know, we want to make sure that the voices are at the table. So I like it, I like it where it's landing. And, and I'm particularly interested, not just in this, but I like the, taking a look at the, some of the mandates that may not be unfunded, but may just be extra work for the, for the educators to do in the classroom, or, or just an extra assessment or test or something, are there ways to streamline some of those things? I mean, these, this is feedback that I know we all get as trustees. This, this takes a look at all of that stuff, which is why it's, it's, it's the long haul, but, but I'm excited about it. I think it's great. I, I really like where we landed on this. So thank you for your work. You got here just in time.
Amen to that.
Dr. Nicolet.
Yes, thank you. I, I agree. Those four core tenants, I think, are eloquently described, and I think for, for most people can, can latch on to something in them that makes sense and that they can engage with and, and buy into. The only thing that I have to say is because I really like this approach, I would like to concurrently have this work be occurring in Washoe County School District, because this look, these four tenants are worthy of our time right now. And so then we will be ready to testify and do other things as necessary. So I think our own system deep dive, and I, I believe it's going on right now, as it should, because we all have questions and we're excited about our new chapter, this gives us a guide as well. And so thank you and everyone for your work.
Thank you, Vice President Nicolet. Trustee Church.
Thank you. And that's an interesting thing from Dr. Nicolet, excellent idea that we might do our own deep dive internally for the school district into, you know, reviewing some of this. So I just want to feedback that I think I heard, this would involve no new taxes, no new fees. This is to set up a statewide review of this, basically the NRS on education A-12. The legislature would be under no obligation to follow what the committee comes out with. The who, what on the committee membership would be determined later, and my experience is there's no guarantee this would even make it out of committee or to committee, but am, am I correct on all that?
Yes, that, that is correct. The one thing, there is a caveat, because the, the commission and the working groups from across the state could recommend changes to statute that then have a fiscal implication, but this specific BDR would have very little fiscal implication for the state.
I just don't want somebody saying the trustee Church voted for more taxes. So this in itself would not have any kind of fiscal.
You're, you're correct, sir. Other, trustee Mayberry?
Yeah, I'll just make a motion if I, if we're ready for that.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
And I'll say too, I appreciate you, you coming, and I think you did a really good job outlining that. It was really high level. I think it brought it down to a, a, a good level that, and I frankly, find it hard to believe that it wouldn't get through. I think it's very non-polarizing, it's not a controversial issue, and I look forward to being part of it. So with that, I'll move to approve the proposed BDR for Washoe County Schools.
Okay. Thank you so much, trustee Mayberry. There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second? I have to track, I saw you leaning in for the motion too, so I figured you'd be the second. Yeah, no, he got there, he got, only because, because I was talking and looking this way, see, so. All right, there is a motion on the floor from trustee Mayberry, and it has been seconded from trustee Smith, that we select the emotional, the modernization of educational statutes or schools, the modernization of education statutes for our one BDR or bill draft request for the upcoming legislative session. Any further discussion? Ready for discussion or not yet?
Uh, no, thank you. I just wanted to thank Dr. Kio and, and the trustees for the guidance. I think that we pulled this together quite quickly, and I'm proud of it. Thank you.
It was great, it was great work, great work. Okay, well, we haven't voted. Hey, 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 hey. [laughing] If I can just get away with my, [laughing]. No, that was, that was okay. I should, I should have waited for that, but thank you. Just vote first and then just in case, all right? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Opposition? All right, the motion is carried. Thank you very much. Now, now you go, Dr. Kio, thank you. No, thank you so much. Great work. Glad to have you here. Trustee Church, if you, you have your hand up, I think it's just leftover, but I want to be sure. Yes, it's waving, so it's okay, well, so we'll move along.
Yeah, I'll, I'll figure it out eventually. Give me a couple hours.
Okay, well, yeah, I'll get, I'll get back to you. I'll get back to you. All right, on to agenda item 4.01, discussion and action to adopt Washoe County School District Board Resolution 22-1013, excuse me, a resolution designed as the 2022-C School Improvement Bond Resolution, authorizing the district to issue its general obligated, which is limited tax, school improvement bonds, Series 2022-C, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed forty million dollars. This is for possible action. And before us is our CFO, Mr. Mathers.
Thank you, Madam President and trustees. So as you just said, before you is an item requesting your approval of a bond resolution authorizing the sale of up to forty million of general obligation rollover bonds. And these bonds will be used to fund projects identified in the fiscal year 23 capital renewal plan you approved in June. So this is the last stop, if you will, in terms of a public meeting for authorization of these bonds. This will be the fourth public meeting concerning these bonds. You authorized us to begin the process in May, and then it went to the Oversight Panel for School Facilities and the Debt Management Commission in June. And all of those entities approved the issuance of this debt plus an additional roughly two-hundred-fifty million of debt. So again, because these are rollover bonds, you recall, the revenues pledged for payment of debt service are property tax monies that come to us by virtue of the thirty-eight-point-eight-five cent property tax rate for school debt. And of course, our full faith and credit is also pledged for repayment of these bonds. These bonds will be fixed-rate bonds and carry a term of just twenty years. We expect the interest rate on these bonds to be around three and a half percent due to the Fed raising interest rates over the last year or so, and probably continuing to raise interest rates. In terms of our ability to pay this debt, in fiscal year 24, which is next fiscal year, the debt service on these bonds plus existing bonds are a little under sixty-six million dollars, and that compares to eighty-one million dollars of property tax revenues we anticipate. So we've got twenty-three percent coverage, which is really, really strong for revenue like this. And we have seventy-five million combined in two debt service funds as a reserve in case we saw a decrease to those revenues for some unexpected reason. So we have strong coverage, strong reserves. Assuming your approval, then we'll go to the rating agencies to get these bonds rated, and then we would plan to go to sale mid-September. I just did want to point out one item to you, a change to the resolution, very, very minor. This came about because the Inflation Reduction Act approved by Congress last week after we prepared the staff report and resolution, and that is on page twenty-four of your resolution. Again, very minor, but we have a reference, sorry, let me find the resolution. Oh, there it is, yeah.
It's on the screen. Thank you, JJ.
Yeah, thank you, JJ. In section twenty-eight, we make a reference to the Internal Revenue Code of Section 55, subsection B, subsection two, and because of the Inflation Reduction Act, there is, that reference is now moved up to section 55B. So you see the redlined page twenty-four of the resolution in front of you. So again, very minor, but we didn't want to make a reference to a section that was no longer relevant.
Okay.
So that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mather. Okay, we see the, we see the proposal before us. It's, it's, it's great to see that we're comfortable with the projected revenues, you know, covering this and then some.
Yep.
So I think it allows us to continue to stay in a strong financial position. So looking for any public comment on this? Okay. Seen all, all, see trustee Church? Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much. Three quick questions. Number one, I noticed it references property tax, so this doesn't delve into the WC1 sales tax, Mr. Mathers?
That is correct. This, these are property taxes and rollover bonds, not WC1 debt.
Okay. And then it uses the term school facilities. Am I correct? That, that can mean under this definition, the admin building, transportation services, nutrition services, not just schools. Am I correct?
You are correct.
Awesome. And then, are we bonded out basically at this point with the other things that we've approved? What happens if an emergency arrives? You know, or is this like maximum bonding that we can't go back for more?
Um, no, sir. We went to the Debt Management Commission for authorization, and we went to you for authorization in May for up to two-hundred-ninety-eight million, five-hundred-fifteen thousand of rollover bonds. So in this series, we're only asking your approval for forty million, so we have roughly two-hundred-fifty million of remaining debt authorization in case there were to be an emergency and we needed to issue bonds right away.
Awesome. And awesome that you have that figure on the top of your head, so incredible. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Church. I appreciate your asking the question about WC1. These are not, that we have, they're, they're different, different funds, if you will. These are rollover bonds, which have nothing to do with, with the, the tax measure that the, the citizens approved for the building of facilities. But we did have, we did have other funds, it just wasn't enough to build schools, so we needed to get more help, so. Okay, yes. Dr. Nicolet.
I just want to share that I serve on the Debt Management Commission, and I have learned a lot. I truly, it's a group of people that have high-level expertise, much like CFO Mathers. And the questions that were asked during that meeting were top-notch, the answers were informative and right on. And I will just say that every time I attend one of those meetings, Debt Management Commission and, and the, the commissioners are a variety of people, and they're all highly knowledgeable, elected officials from each of our, our area, like a city council and our commissioners and councils from around Washoe County. And let me see, the IFGID, no, not the, what are those called? The, the area?
General improvement district.
Thank you. The general improvement district. So it's of such a vast variety of people who have, who have skin in the game, if you will, that benefit from our schools. And the questions, like I said, that were, were asked of CFO Mathers were very deep-dive, and everyone without fail was very impressed and very supportive, and was really very honored to be able to vote yes for this. And, and so, just a little tidbit, because I will tell you, I go to these meetings and I learn something new every time.
Thank you for your service on that commission, on behalf of the board too. Appreciate that, Dr. Nicolet. Questions, comments, otherwise, looking for a motion, if it is a pleasure of the board?
Absolutely.
Thank you, trustee Rodriguez. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Dr. Nicolet. I'll read the motion. The motion is to, that the, the Board of Trustees adopts Washoe County School District Board Resolution 22-013A, 2022C, School Improvement Bond Resolution, authorizing the district to issue general obligation bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed forty million dollars. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 Opposition? Okay. It passes unanimously. Let the record show it is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Mather. Great work. We can continue to work on our schools. All right, we're going to go on to agenda item five. All right, we're going to go on to agenda item 5.01. This is presentation from students attending various schools throughout the Washoe County School District on their experiences from their first day of school. This is for presentation only. And the superintendent is enthusiastically leaning in. So, Dr. Enfield?
I'm always leaning in, President Taylor. Thank you. I just want to make note for the trustees that I know that, um, in past years, we've actually had students and staff come, and we made the decision with everything going on, and I'll, I'll take the blame on this one as the new superintendent, balancing a lot of things, that we would, uh, provide you with a video, um, and introduce our principals via PowerPoint. That said, I will be bringing a proposal forward to the trustees in the weeks ahead about how we can incorporate, um, school presentations and students into our regular board meetings. So I don't, I want you to know we're not depriving you of the joy of being with, of having our students and staff here in person permanently, just for now.
It is the best part of the meeting. I'm just saying, okay.
Hey, I'm right here.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, 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 sorry. You're second to students, come on. All right.
So, good afternoon, President Taylor, trustees, Dr. Enfield, Michelle Anderson, Communications and Community Engagement Officer, Chief Communications Community Engagement Officer, longest title, and with me is Area Superintendent Lauren Ford. So as Dr. Enfield mentioned, and all of you had the pleasure of joining us on the first day of school and welcoming our students, um, not only a week ago, but also to Incline, uh, just the other day, and then we have more first day, uh, starting on Monday. And as Dr. Enfield mentioned, we did something a little different, and that's not to deprive you of the students, but we went out to them. And I think what was excellent about this is we actually have some, uh, staff in the video as well. So I think it'll be something that lightens your heart. Um, and we had a really quick little story that, um, Lauren Ford would like to say, because I think it also goes to just how busy they are in the first week of school, but then some other things that we didn't take into account previously.
We, um, are lucky enough to have one of, of the amazing teachers from Drake Elementary School in the video, and as she said to me, um, there's no way I would come to the board to do that. It's too, I'm too scared. And then she also said that she's much better in front of little people than adult people. So I think that this was an excellent way of capturing her, where we would not get exposure to her any other way. So I think it's a great thing.
Some things new. All right. Roll the video.
They completed English. Coming back after summer was really exciting to see all my old students again and all my coworkers. So that was great, coming back that first day. There was so much excitement in the air. There was also a lot of, um, chaos in figuring out, um, the complexity of having a brand-new building with multiple different schools feeding into this school.
I like it. I like it, yeah, as, um, I like how the, the classes are. You know, they feel a little bit shorter. School's really nice and clean. Yeah, I like it. Yeah, actually, that was my favorite part, I would say, about the school. A lot of, a lot of cool teachers, you know, nice teachers, understanding.
It was really busy. We have twenty-four hundred kids, um, so it's a lot. But some positive things that I heard from kids. Look at these classrooms. Our teachers were extremely friendly and approachable, so it was nice for the kids to have every single teacher standing outside of their classroom door greeting them, going over expectations with them. A lot of our students are familiar with Dr. Taylor, so they enjoyed interacting with her as well as our new superintendent.
The excitement outweighed the chaos, I would say. And our admin team here worked so much over the summer to try to make it as smoothly as possible.
First day of school was great. I was really excited to have the kids back. They're very excited. They seem like they really want to be here, and I think that we're working with some really great people this year. We've got a bunch of new teachers, but they seem excited to be here, so it's been a good environment to start this year off with.
Um, Monday was good. Um, I love all the staff and like all the teachers here, so that was fun. I like, I like all my classes. My, my classes are really fun.
Yeah, it was kind of confusing learning. I still didn't know the schedule, like what, like classes would be in each day. I have to look every before I go.
Um, I thought it was pretty good, too. My classes, I like my classes, too. I like my new, my new teachers. I only have really two teachers I had from last year, but all my new teachers, I'm really kind of chilled with them. I'm like, we're cool. It was just a good day.
Our first day here at Florence Drake Elementary couldn't have gone any better. We were ready and excited to see all of our returning students and to welcome and meet all of our new students. Our families were here with smiles before and after school. I don't think it could have gone any better than it did.
It was good. Let's see, there's a list that I could say. It's the first day. You got to, uh, learn, but also to like make all your stuff for the entirety of the next year. Like for your binder and your, uh, name tag. Another thing I noticed that was fun is that in my class, uh, he switches our spots every day. So I'm pretty sure it's so that way you get more social with people in your class. You're not so shy later on in the year.
They all are ready to learn. Um, they love seeing their friends. It's just been amazing. I've been teaching twenty-six years. I love being a teacher. Our students here at Drake, and I'm sure all students in the district, um, just make every day awesome. So I'm looking forward to just an outstanding year all the way around.
So I just want to give a shout out to Jeff Foss, our amazing videographer. And as you can, it wasn't scripted. Those were literally from the kids with little editing, so that we could really provide to you what their first day felt like. So, uh, thank you very much for letting us do that platform this year.
Yeah, that was awesome. Awesome, very good. Let's give him a hand. That's great. Thank you. All right, and I see you scooting in, because don't go away. All right, this is presentation and introduction of our new principals in the Washoe County School District, and before us are all five area superintendents. We don't always get all five of them up at the same time, so. Ms. Ford, you're in the middle. You have the mic on. You're the lead, so we'll go to you.
Thank you, President Taylor, Superintendent Enfield, and board of trustees. For the record, Lauren Ford, Area Superintendent. I am here today with all of my colleagues, Ms. Amory Dixon, Ms. Tiffany McMaster, Ms. Jen Van Tress, and Dr. Mike Paul. And we are here to introduce our new principals in each of our areas. So now I'll introduce Amory, and she will get us started with Area One.
Okay, we have two amazing new principals in Area One. Principal Erin Dawson at Hunsberger Elementary School and Principal Marcus Culpepper at Echo Loader Elementary, and I will pass it on to Tiffany.
Hello. Area Two is excited to welcome four new principals to our area, starting off with Ms. Kimberly Crowley at Yvonne Shaw Middle School, Teresa Cantana at Desert Skies Middle School, Ryan Smith at Glenn Duncan Elementary School, and Ashley Olivera at Sun Valley Elementary School. With that, I will pass it off to Dr. Mike Paul, Area Three.
Good afternoon. Um, so I am very honored to introduce four, uh, four elementary school principals new to Area Three. The first one we have here is Mr. Ryan Dutch at Diedrickson Elementary, Denise Paul at Jerry Whitehead, no relation at all, so there's no nepotism happening there.
I was going to ask about that.
Just want to put that on the record and make that clear. Kevin Sadie at Anderson Elementary. And then we also have John Stern at, at Incline Elementary School. And so I'll pass it on to Lauren in Area Four.
Awesome.
Area Four, we welcome Freeman Holbrook at McQueen High School. At Sparks High School, CJ Waddell. At Peavine Elementary School, Amy Howe. At, um, Florence Drake Elementary School, Jason Shipman. And now for Ms. Jen Van Tress with Area Five.
So Area Five is Mandy Sheridan, Cold Springs Middle School. And that concludes.
Okay, all right, and we're done.
So we would just like, uh, all of the new principals are so excited to be there. They're looking forward to school visits. So we're hoping that you're all able to go out and, and spend some time with each one of our new principals, and letting them share the joy of the buildings. So thank you so much for your time today and, uh, enjoy.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's give a hand for our new principals. That's awesome. And congratulations to each of them. All righty. Is that goal three? Yeah. Oh, yeah, we, we removed five point zero three was pulled from the agenda. That's right. Okay, so we're going to go on to agenda item five point zero four. This is presentation, discussion, and possible action to approve with or without conditions. Just to make sure we can get that on the agenda. Thank you, council, for your advice on getting that together. An amendment to the charter agreement as well as approval of the purchase option agreement and bond purchase agreement necessary for the project for Coral Academy of Science Charter School for an additional campus located in Northwest Reno, located at fifteen ninety-five Mountain Drive, Reno, Nevada, eight nine five zero three. And this is for possible action, and we have a lot of names here, but I only see Mr. Mathers, so we're just going to go to you, sir.
Thank you very much, Madam President, um, trustees. So I'm happy to, uh, make this presentation today. I'm going to start with a spoiler alert. We have reached an agreement with Coral Academy of Science on, uh, mitigation for our concerns, and so we are recommending approval of the charter amendment, um, the purchase agreement for the acquisition of the site, and the bond purchase agreement and associated documents to execute, um, long-term debt on behalf of Coral. So I just start with that, um, kind of with that, um, again, spoiler alert, I'll just try to go through this real quickly. You'll recall that Coral entered into a lease purchase option, hey, Neil, agreement in December, that gave them the, the right and the option to acquire the Sky Mountain facility by mid-July. And then in April, we received the proposal from Coral for that new campus. And of course, with that proposal, again, we have a number of different agreements that we have to approve. So, you know, as you know, we began, um, reviewing those materials, and then we came to you in, on June twenty-eighth, to provide our analysis, most of which was focused on financial matters. And again, I won't go through this line by line for sure, but we did look at, you know, financial projections that Coral had made. We reviewed other information, certainly, that they provided. And, you know, we, uh, on June twenty-eighth, kind of outlined some of our concerns, one of which is enrollment projections. We believe that Washoe County has kind of pivoted from a, a county where we see a growing enrollment overall of K through twelve to, to possibly declining enrollment, certainly flatter enrollment than what we'd seen, um, during the last several decades. And, and that fact, combined with the use of long-term debt initially, along with rising construction prices, rising inflation and so forth, gave us a little bit of pause, so that, you know, we wanted to kind of go through those risks with the board, which we did, and, you know, outline, outline those concerns. One of the important things that I think has come out is that as the sponsor of charter schools, or at least some charter schools, we are responsible for certain costs if a charter is closed. And we didn't always know that at the district. That wasn't, well-known, but became well-known, and we've received, uh, very direct, specific communication from the state about some of these, um, long-term liabilities that we would need to cover in the case of closure, and which we are actually currently paying, um, based on the closure of a school that happened several years ago. So that's certainly a concern of the district. Of course, we also have responsibilities to provide oversight for charters that we sponsor as well, hence, you know, our review. So again, on June twenty-eighth, our concerns were really, um, focused on the area of finance, certainly not academics. You heard, you know, several hours of testimony and analysis, and you directed staff, um, to meet with Coral, continue to meet with them, to try to work out solutions, um, to address our concerns, and come back when we did. And so that is why we're here today. Um, before we got to this point, though, certainly, we went through a very intense thorough review, which I think Coral would agree with, that it was a very thorough review that we went with them. So these are the kinds of things we met and talked about. We had a number of meetings with them, multi-hour meetings, um, where we, you know, came away with a better understanding of, of certainly their use of debt. We verified, um, through those meetings that the appraised value of the Sky Mountain facility did equal the purchase price they're paying, which is good. We vetted the debt transaction, although we might disagree slightly with certain features of their debt financing plan. It is, it is a reasonably structured debt financing plan. And then we looked again at the issue of the letters of interest, and, you know, given kind of the fluid nature of that, there was only so far we could go in terms of validating the information. So again, there are these financial liabilities that, um, concerned us, and, um, that's where we still are. We, um, still have some concerns about, you know, a, a worst-case scenario and these costs coming back to the district. So like we did in June twenty-eighth, we, we are disclosing that to the board so that you know and have all that information in order to make a decision. But I am happy to report that we did come to agreement, um, during the last month on how to mitigate those financial risks. And so with that, again, we are recommending approval of their charter amendment, bond purchase agreement and related agreements, and the purchase option agreement for the Sky Mountain facility. You'll recall the landowner extended the deadline for them to purchase the building. So that's why we are here in front of you today. We worked very hard and very fast to try to get to this date, and I'm glad we made it. So what are the conditions that go along with our conditional recommendation, um, that we've come to agreement with on Coral? Well, first, they will make an initial deposit of nine hundred six thousand seven hundred fifty dollars into an escrow account for mitigation of those liabilities. At the same time, they will contract with a certified actuary to quantify the, um, what we call fondly and excitedly, other post-employment benefits, or OPEB. That, that was the key financial risk that we had identified, and, you know, we were stuck for a while and that those liabilities are not quantified. So in order to get a better handle on those, Coral will engage in contract with a certified actuary. And then once we actually get a number from that actuary, we can determine whether it's lower than nine hundred six thousand seven hundred fifty dollars. If it is, say if their liabilities are four hundred thousand dollars, then they would be, then that portion, uh, under nine hundred six seven fifty would be returned to them immediately. Except for the fact that we've set a minimum, um, escrow amount of a hundred seventeen thousand dollars. So that would cover unemployment insurance and, and possibly other costs that might come about in a, again, worst-case closure scenario. So there's a maximum escrow amount of nine hundred six seven fifty, and there's a minimum escrow amount of a hundred seventeen thousand. And Coral Academy has agreed to this, as you can see on attachment A, the term sheet. So that sets up, you know, the deposit for some time. All of those funds would be released after year two, so year one, which is fiscal year twenty-four. School year twenty-four is year one for Coral. It's a ramp-up period. So the, the conditions for release of the escrow will start in year two or fiscal year twenty-five. And basically, if they hit either of the two conditions or metrics at the bottom of the slide, funds would be released to, back to Coral. So they get all of their money back if they meet either of these two conditions. The first one being if they come within ninety percent of their enrollment projection, um, for, uh, for two straight years, beginning in year two. So it could be years two and three. It could be years six and seven. It could be years fifteen, sixteen, right? Whenever they hit their enrollment projections, funds would, the escrow funds would be released to them. Or they could fail to meet those enrollment projections, but if they make reductions of costs in order to meet their required debt service coverage of one-ten, as we talked about earlier today, how our rollover bonds had coverage of a hundred twenty-four percent, their bond covenants in, in all of their bond documents require a coverage ratio of one-ten. They far exceed that currently, but basically, they'd have to work if enrollment fell short of what they projected to kind of realign expenses to, again, meet that debt service coverage of one-ten. And then that would satisfy us that they've made the proper adjustments to be a sustainable operation. And so, again, this is a lot of work, a lot of meetings. You know, I appreciate Coral Academy and their attorneys work, working with us. I think they were very cordial discussions. So here we are. We are, um, again, rec, oops, again, recommending approval of the charter amendment. We are, um, again, rec, oops, again, recommending approval of the charter amendment, the agreement, um, with, with their landowner to buy the Sky Mountain facility, the bond purchase agreement, which is required to issue long-term debt, and all the associated documents, which would include a loan agreement related to that debt transaction. So I tried to make this short and sweet. Hopefully I did that. Certainly, I think Coral Academy management is here to answer any questions. Neil is here, if you have any questions, I'm here as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mathers. Certainly, I was gonna say, why don't we go to public comment first, and then we can bring it back here to the board. And even as we're doing that though, I just, I really want to thank, um, our staff, um, the superintendent's leadership, Mr. Mathers, all of your work, um, our legal team, and all, all of the staff that worked hard to, uh, to get to a place of, of a positive recommendation. Um, I want to thank Coral, um, for all of your work as well, and the, the meetings and meetings and adjustments and all of those things, uh, to get to a place of, um, of a positive recommendation. And I think at the end of the day, that's where we all want to be. And, uh, we'll start, certainly we'll find out when we have a vote, but it's certainly be, it feels better to be there than, than otherwise. So just thank you. I know it was not easy. I know it took a lot of work, and, uh, we just, just appreciate it. On behalf of the board, I can certainly say that we certainly appreciate that. So thank you very much. JJ?
Fezzi Tandogan.
Come on up. I, I just call you Principal Fezzi, cause I don't want to mess up the Tandogan, so.
Very challenging name. Madam President, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Enfield, Superintendent. Thank you so much for giving this opportunity to talk a little bit. I want to thank first the Washoe County School District staff and also Board of Trustees. Uh, we work very hard. It took a couple months to finalize this, but I'm, we're very happy. Together, we worked per your recommendation at the last board meeting, June 28th board meeting. There was just a recommendation to work with the Washoe County School District staff, and we worked very hard, multiple meetings, a lot of exchanges, and also documents we provided, so we came to an. I want to thank everyone, especially Board of Trustees and the Washoe County School District staff, um, for making this happen. And Washoe County and Coral Academy is gonna be proud opening this, uh, school in Northwest Reno. So I can answer any question if you have, or we have staff here, our band team, and also, uh, a couple of staff members from Coral Academy. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. We'll get any other public comment, and then we'll ask you to stay close by if we have questions.
That's all I have.
With all the public comments, okay. Thank you, thank you very much. Let's, we can bring it back here to the board. We certainly had opportunities to, uh, to hear from the team, to read, read information, uh, have conversations with the superintendent, um, about it. I, I think it's certainly safe to say that, um, Coral Academy is, is, is an, is an amazing, um, school, um, an academic shining star, um, in, in the district amongst our, amongst our charter schools. And so we're, I, we're proud, we're proud to have it, and proud that we can continue to, uh, to partner and work together, um, as you, uh, continue to do what you do Coral style. Looking for a motion then, if there's no other comments, if that is a pleasure of the board, looking for a motion, please. Trustee Smith?
Thank you so much, President Taylor. Um, definitely want to echo that Coral Academy is, is an area of success for Washoe County. I, I do want to point out though, that with the challenges that we had in this, it, it is something that we should look at from a process standpoint. Our charter partners should understand what the process is with us. We should also understand what the process is with them. So I fully recognize that there are ways that we've done things in the past versus where we're growing, and it's really important to have an understanding of what those baselines are, so that we don't have misunderstandings, um, particularly as our charters and our partners grow. It has to be a mutual understanding so that we're all working with the same set of expectations and partnership in choosing sites, um, bonds, all of that. And so the one thing that I would like to add is that we are, although our enrollment is obviously in a different capacity, but with our maturity as a district, we continue to grow. And so my takeaway with this and my ask for the superintendent and the staff and with our district charters is to ideally get in front of these things, um, next time. Uh, and that's not just with Coral, that's with all of our district partners, because I, I would like there to be a better understanding of how these things happen in the future with an emphasis on site location.
Thank you, Trustee Smith. It's really, really good points to pull out, and we can be in front of it. And no, I will, I will also say that, um, as Mr. Mathers pointed out, the realizations that we've gotten as we've gone along and, and so on, that have required a different look at how the process works, and those aren't bad things per se, right, at all. I mean, that's, that's the job, is to do this in the best way that we can for all the partners. So we really, really will say it, really will say it. Trustee Mayberry?
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, no, I, uh, trying to restrain my jubilation, so I'm really pleased we got to where we are today. I, I do want, and I don't want to be redundant, but I want to echo what Trustee Smith said. I, I think, you know, for all of our charters, it would be wise that if there's any, um, amendments or changes that require approval from this board, that, that in the future, that they, they do, uh, meet with our staff early and often so that we can have a lot less turbulence and have a smoother landing next time. And I want to salute, uh, Mr. Mathers, Mr. Lombardo for your, your work and, and all of your support staff, as well as Coral. I, I can't be more pleased and happy and appreciative of, of where we landed. I think, uh, with Coral's reputation and their record, I'm, I'm confident that, uh, that they're gonna see success going forward. And, uh, I, I again, appreciate everybody's partnership and their work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Trustee Mayberry. No other comments, and if it is the pleasure of the board, then looking for a motion? Trustee Rodriguez, is this is Trustee Rodriguez's motion day?
I'd be more than happy.
Let's do it.
Um, I, I was real quick, Madam President, I want to echo again to what Trustee Smith and, and, uh, Mayberry, I am very pleased that our school district and Coral Academy are able to make this happen. And, uh, with that, I'm more than happy to make a motion. Uh, moving that the Board of Trustees approves the request of Coral Academy of Science for a charter amendment for the school expansion at, uh, 1595 Sky Mountain Drive, Reno, Nevada, as well as a purchase option agreement and form of a bond purchase agreement based on the conditions outlined in attachment A.
I'll second that. There's a motion in the floor from Trustee Rodriguez and second it from Trustee Mayberry. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Okay, the motion carries. As the record show, it is unanimous. All right, it's great to get here. We appreciate all the hard, hard, hard work from all parties, and I look forward to continue to work together moving forward. All right, absolutely. Thank you so much. Okay, we will start with, we have board reports, but I always like to go with the student first, so we go with the student representative, I like to call their student trustee.
Hi.
Ivy, your report.
Um, so, yeah, I had my first day of school yesterday, um, and I was really happy to see some of you there. I saw like the welcome, um, Superintendent Dr. Enfield sign, and I went up to Ms. Cahill, and I was like, is she coming today? And she was like, yeah, and a few trustees. And I was like, come find me when they're here.
They're my colleagues.
And, um, so I was really, that was definitely the best part of my day. And we're actively, we're, um, having our rise week, so it's been a different start than, than we've normally had, although our last normal school year start, I guess, is my freshman year, now I'm a senior, but.
It was quite a while ago, yeah.
But yeah, so we have our rise week and we're, um, it's a program where we're engaging relationships between faculty and students, um, and really getting to know one another. And Incline, it seems like a place where everybody would know everybody, but it is the first time where we've all been in a room together for several days, and I'll look around and I'll be like, I have never seen a lot of these kids in my entire life. And so, um, it's been a great experience to get to know anybody, everybody on a deeper level. And with that, I was also pleased to hear from, um, Dr. Enfield, that student voice, um, our coordinator was a TOSA, so she was actually reassigned, and she just so happened to come to Incline. So that was also, um, it's also a very great thing, but we will get student voice and our council up back and running, it sounds like in, um, September. And so I'm very excited about that and being able to engage with other students from different schools. So yeah, that's about it.
All right. Fantastic. And now, welcome back to school. Why don't we, why don't we start with Trustee Church, since you're on the screen, sir? We'll start with you.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm probably gonna regurgitate with some of the other trustees we're going to be talking about, but, uh, had the opening school day, so I was at the Reno Town Ball for that event. And then I went to, well, we had the Hug High opening, as well as Dotson Elementary, not opening, but what was for hug. Other ones are routine school years, but first day of school, I guess is better said. So those were wonderful events, to attend all those, see that. Also attended a drug reduction seminar put on jointly by JTNN and Washoe County School District, held at the Elks Lodge, and, uh, it was an excellent event put on by both those entities. So that was wonderful, as well as the, uh, food that was there was, uh, way too good. And then I, just for the record, I did put on, at the last policy meeting, uh, some statute came out from JTNN on drug use in the community, in the school district. And so while that's not, uh, number one on the top of the superintendent's agenda with getting the schools up and operating and the buses flowing, but it's something that I hope we can address in the future, that the drug abuse is systemic nationwide and includes, we can't ignore that it affects, um, us as well at the Washoe County. Hopefully we can address that down the road. Other than that, wonderful events, I also attended the Natchez Elementary 50th, uh, opening, grand opening, 50 years of service there at the Natchez Elementary. And so that was a wonderful event. Uh, I've never been out there, so it was just really good to meet the principal and the, the community. And that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Church. We'll just keep going around from there. Trustee Mayberry?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be, uh, I'll be brief, since this meeting's brief. I don't want to occupy the time, but I.
You still have three minutes, sir, so.
First day of school, it was a pleasure, and it was a privilege to be part of that at, uh, our newest high school, and, um, what a treat that was to shout out many of my colleagues and, and the new superintendent, and, uh, met the deputy superintendent, so that was, uh, that was a real blessing. And, and as a, as a dad with, uh, two, uh, children in the district, it was a busy week for us, you know, getting clothes and school supplies and changing schedules, um, we're, it needed to be, so I, I, I get the pain and, uh, um, that a lot of our parents feel, um, and, uh, and the exhilaration as well. So I wish all of our students and, and staff a wonderful school year. Also had the privilege of attending with my colleague, Trustee Rodriguez, a, uh, uh, brief ceremony, uh, for our school police. You have two of them here in the, uh, in the audience today. You know, sometimes these, uh, these men and women are sort of in the back, in the background, and, and we don't acknowledge them enough, but, uh, really appreciate them and all they do, keep us safe and, and secure, and it was a real honor to be part of that and, um, uh, see some of our law enforcement officers get recognized from some lifesaving, incidents and, um, and, and other related, uh, support that, uh, our, our police provide. And finally, um, you know, we talk a lot about our, uh, bus driver shortages and teacher shortages, and there's all kinds of shortages right now, and there's also a pilot shortage. And so I just want to announce to the public, and, uh, there's this event, aviation is near and dear to me, as some of you know, Girls of Aviation Day will take place on Saturday, September 24th, at 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the, uh, Atlantic Aviation, that's on the, uh, east side of the Reno Tahoe International Airport, and some of the aviation operators there. It's a great opportunity for young girls and women to experience aviation, learn about all the jobs that, uh, the aviation industry offers. I have some flyers that I'll provide to the superintendent as well. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Mayberry. Vice President Nicolet?
Thank you. I will read my notes and watch the time clock, cause I am noted for going on and on.
I think, no, I see, I, I see the side eye you're giving me over there, okay.
I joyfully attended the teacher supply distribution at The Row, The Rose Silver Legacy, on August 10th. It's a partnership with Ed Alliance of Washoe County and the Public Education Foundation. 750 teachers from 23 Washoe County School District schools received tote bags of school supplies for their classrooms, and they were packed by the Caesar's Hero, all capital letters, H-E-R-O volunteers, and they had shirts. They were really proud and having a great time. And all of this helped support student learning in the classroom. Before that, they had a, a student backpack giveaway. In addition, 200 students received backpacks filled with school supplies through the Washoe County School Children Transition Program. Let me just say here that there are, there are just absolutely numerous, countless programs in Washoe County that help our students and our families, um, and, and there isn't enough time for me to mention them all. Supplies were generously funded by Caesar's Entertainment and Caesar's Foundation, which is part of the Eldorado Resorts properties. Also, there are, uh, 200 teacher tote bags of these same supplies that are now available at the Education Alliance Teachers Warehouse for teachers who couldn't, um, make that event. So please, run to your Ed Alliance Warehouse, because there's not only those bags, but just a, a plethora of wonderful supplies for teachers. It was a wonderful event that was attended by teachers and students, and I will just say in my last minute that, um, that is just one event that I attended. I feel so truly blessed to have attended, um, numerous schools and events, and there are so many wonderful things going on in our community that support our students, our families, and in general, our community, that we are blessed. And all we need to do is look around and see the countless people and organizations that are committed to success as a community through our students. And so, uh, I want to just give a shout out to our community, because we do rock. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Nicolet. Jump over to, uh, Clerk Minetto.
Thank you, Madam President. I too went to the Partner in Education Supply Giveaway, and it was fabulous, we missed each other, but I was there earlier, you were there later, and it was fabulous. And, uh, something I especially noticed was the tote itself is something that these teachers are gonna use for years and years and years to come. It's a wonderful, heavy-duty tote. Now, and then I was at Traffic and Pedestrian Safety, Safety Media Event. It, it was on the corner of McCarran and Sullivan. And right there by, there's a, a liquor store there, and just up, there's a, a strip of fake grass there. It's like you could go, you know, practice your golf or whatever. It, it was the weirdest thing, but it, it's, you know. But it was, it was, um, fun. I got, I got to see some other people from the community, and it was, it was great. And we all ended up on the news, you know, good stuff, good stuff on the news.
Good stuff on the news.
Went to the first day of hug, um, got to see a couple of kids I taught when they were little guys, which is always thrilling to me. I don't know how thrilling it is to them, but in high school, but it's thrilling to me. And then later that day, we, uh, that girl. President Taylor and I drove out together to Natchez, to, uh, Natchez's 50th birthday, and it was amazing. It, it, uh, it was amazing. The children sang, uh, an adult sang, it was, it was just amazing. And that's it for me. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Clerk Minetto. Trustee Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. JJ, if I can get those photos up.
Oh, some show and tell. Oh. Okay, it's time to level up, okay?
I, I'm trying to keep up with Trustee Smith here, so.
Okay.
Yeah, desperate here. No, uh, just kind of going off of, uh, Trustee Mayberry, we did have the pleasure to, uh, visit the last day, annual day of training for officers, they have to do their CEUs. And during that was an award ceremony. If we can get the next picture. I want to embarrass one of our officers here. Uh, so Officer Raspore, and I'm gonna, I know there's, uh, I just got the name, I'm trying to butcher this, Raspisora? Raspisora, okay. And, uh, Officer Gomez and Mustafa, uh, so they were awarded lifesavers, lifesaver award. They actually did CPR on a student and brought him back to life. So I really would like to.
Awesome. All right. A hero in our midst, man.
He's blushing, he's blushing. No, and that just, you know, these guys do so much, uh, you know, officers, men and women, uh, do a lot, and, uh, I don't think they get enough recognition, so I am happy to, this is a great, I was, I was very honored to be there with Trustee Mayberry. Along with that, uh, I, I wasn't able to go out and opening, or opening day of school, but I was able to do a second, uh, with Councilman Abbott and Sergeant Baker. So we were able to visit multiple schools, and, uh, Councilman Abbott is quite the Sparks High School historian.
Oh, a historian, huh?
Oh, my gosh. Oh, my gosh, I can't begin, like, I learned a lot from him. He was actually, he was giving us the tour. I guess he's like the president, um, he's the president or something there? Gosh. Yeah, like, of alumni, so he's president alumni, so.
Wow.
Awesome time. And, and, you know, we got, you know, just talked about things like, you know, how Sparks Police do things in relation to ours and, you know, just try and build better working relationships. And then after, today, actually, Councilwoman Vanderwell and I, we visited O'Brien, so we got more of a detailed tour of that. And as, I don't know if a lot of you guys know, Councilwoman Vanderwell works pretty closely with our trades in education centers. And her and Principal Baker were able to start to plan something going on, and I guess there's, the training centers actually have Virgil, 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 thank you, simulators they can actually bring to schools.
They can bring them to schools.
They can bring them to schools.
I've seen those simulators, they can bring them.
They can do the whole, yeah, and I'm running out of time. But anyways, it was a really good relationship building there between, you know, Sparks Council and, and our schools. Things are moving forward, I'm really excited, so, I like it.
Fantastic. All right. Thank you, Trustee Rodriguez. Trustee Smith?
Thank you. That was a great board report, Trustee Rodriguez.
He's leveling up.
Yeah, he really is. So for the past couple weeks, lots of great stuff to report on. I presented to a group of real estate professionals. They're very aware of the school district for good reasons, and that was really, really fantastic, because we've got some good news to share. We had a great conversation, but there's so much good stuff coming out of the district, and I view that as pollinating all the accurate news around the district. And it was, it was really, really powerful. I also attended and very actively participated in the Trekkie Meadows Regional Planning Governing Board, which is a board that I sit on with other elected officials on behalf of the district. August 13th was the Back to School Expo at the Reno Town Mall. Boy, was this great. So memo to everyone in our community, it might say that it starts at 10:00, there were easily a couple hundred people there by 10 o'clock. So words out for next year, you're gonna wanna get the jump on that. Giving out supplies, connecting families with information about our schools, curriculum, counseling, all the things. It was just so phenomenal, super, super well done. One thing that happened over the course of that was in the Sierra View Library, which is the library there in the Reno Town Mall, got to actually meet two Reno High School students who on their own started something called the Youth Language Initiative. They go into our libraries once a month, they have speakers that talk about different world languages, the cultures, give lessons on it, and they have done this completely on their own. So we brought this to the attention of Principal Chris Hackbush from Reno High, but this is something that they've done on their own. And that's just an example of two of our students who are out in our community doing great things, because they're empowered to do so, and it was just incredible to see. I sent one of my babies to school on August 15th, the other one doesn't start till Monday, so I'll report on that later. And then my show and tell is the Art of Childhood Event last Friday for the Children's Cabinet, that was with Dr. Enfield. And that was a phenomenal event. The Children's Cabinet is a very valued partner of the Washoe County School District. They do so much for our community. And in addition to the many, many services, is mental health support and mental health wellness, not just for students, but for their whole families. And last but not least, I'm always grateful for the conversations that I have with teachers, admins, community members, parents. Thank you for reaching out to me, and thank you for always trusting me with what's going on, so that I can carry the torch. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Trustee Smith. I have a few things, I'll go quickly on those things that I've shared with my colleagues, many have already been mentioned. I was able to attend a community meeting on, of Black pastors, African-American Clergy Council of Northern Nevada called ACON. And it was about a lot of things, but we spent a lot of time talking about education, talking about the role of, of education in terms of the Black community, and talking about the new superintendent. So it was just great for a community group to ask a lot of questions. We spent a lot of time on the agenda on, on something, of course, that's near and dear, near and dear to me. I kinda felt guilty, it's like I'm taking over the meeting, but it was, I'm, I'm always available to talk about what we're doing in the school district. Again, Reno Town Hall, I went to that meeting in the morning, by the time I got to Reno Town Hall, people were out of things, it was like, folks had like run through there like a swarm of locusts and just run, it was like, woo, there is, is there anything less, like, man, well, we're out. I mean, it was, it was awesome. It was really great. And so, yeah, note to self to the community, get there early, and then note to self to our staff, double up on your things that you give away, because one, one, one family came in, it was a dad, and they were just barely before, what time was we, 2 o'clock? He barely got there before 2 o'clock. You, you remember, and he, Michelle and I were talking, and he was, he was a little salty that we were, that we had run out of some things. He was a little, I mean, not in a bad way, but he was like, oh, it was like, dude, it's, it was close to, it was close to closing time, but it was like, just, just that much interest in, in being there and talking to people and so on. So I thought that was actually really cool. And Michelle and I said, oh, okay, note to self, note to self. I was able to start our first day of school, our last week's first day of school, at Transportation, Transportation at, at Alice Smith, Transportation 6:30 in the morning. But it was, it was really great, really great, got a chance to. Tammy was the school bus driver, and she talked about how much she liked driving the bus. And I had some great conversations with some kids going to O'Brien, eighth graders, they were all, all three of them were eighth graders, and I thought they'd be a little shy. Oh, jeez, no. Oh, jeez, we had, we had great conversations and talked about them going to their new school and how exciting that was. Kudos to the, the crew at O'Brien. I mean, those, those students were there, they were ready to go. It was, you know, first day, so a lot of traffic, and parents dropping off kids, and kids walking and figuring things out, and so we all jumped in to help, and, okay, I'm in charge of this board right here. They had all the sixth graders' names on the wall, and when they come and it gives you their name, and then you tell them where their class is, okay, great. So one kid came and we looked up, we looked up his name, and they said, okay, you're in 310. He said, where's 310? I said, I don't know. They don't, I don't know where the room was, they're saying, yeah, it was, it was like, no, it's 124, where is it? I don't know. But I know where you, I know that you're in one, didn't tell me that part. They just told me what they wanted to find. But anyway, so we learned together. We did, we learned, we learned together. And then from there, we went over to HUG, and you've got a chance to see some video, and what a great day it was over there. It's really kudos to all of those, the staff that worked there. We, uh, thank you. We ran into some former staff members that were there as well, Kristin McNeil and Byersdorf. If you got a chance to, I said, it was a great day, it's a great day.
You still have 27?
Oh, no, it's one the other way. It goes up when you get over three minutes, it goes up, it goes up.
I was gonna give you more time.
I know, it's okay, I never take my time, but that's okay. It happens. Dr. Enfield?
Well, I will just continue all the good news that I know that you still had to share to President Taylor.
All right, it's okay.
If I had a proper slide, it would actually be musical, I would be playing, it's the most wonderful time of the year. I know that's a holiday song, but that's what I think of when I think of the start of school. It has been such a wonderful kickoff for this school year, and being new to the community, I think that it's had a heightened level of excitement for me, because it's all new, I haven't been to these places before. I want to thank all the trustees who came out to the schools, it was wonderful to share the excitement with all of you. And to date, I have been able, as President Taylor said, we got to ride a school bus together bright and early on the first day with our deputy superintendent as well, who is the proud mother of a kindergartner who started school yesterday. And so far, I have been to O'Brien, HUG, Cannon, Vaughn, Dodson Innovations, Mamie Toll's, Juniper, where the governor was also serving lunch, Sarah Winamaka Lenz yesterday for the first day of kindergarten, as well as Incline, to Incline High School, Elementary and Middle School, which has been great, so really have loved being out in all of these schools. And Ivy, you'll be happy to know that I'm already making sure to get another Incline visit on the calendar before the snow starts. And I'm hearing the snow starts early, so I want to make sure that I get back up there. I, I know we never know, but I am committed to getting, to getting back there. But I just want to thank all of the staff across the district, here at Central Office, Transportation Nutrition Services, and our school, school buildings. It's been an amazing start. The smiles on the faces of students and staff, and staff saying how good it feels this year to actually be doing the job that they so want to do, which is not to be the COVID commander of their building, or as a principal, but to actually be a principal welcoming families, welcoming students, being in classrooms, looking at our students, engaged in joyful learning. It has been, I know I'm a little effusive, sorry, but I can't help it, I'm just so grateful and so proud of the, of the hard work that has paid off and such a wonderful start to the school year. To Ivy's point, we are gonna make sure that our Student Advisory Council gets up and running, and I'm committed to being at all of those for at least part of it, as much as I can. I believe the first one is September 20th at Dilworth, that's what my calendar says, but we'll confirm, Ivy, the word out. I know that we're working on that, I want to thank Joe Orst and his team. This is important, A, it's important for our students, it's important for me, because it's part of my entry plan, so I kinda gotta do it. But also, it's my favorite part of the job, to be able to get to know our students and engage with them. I do want to just also note that the Art of Childhood Event was wonderful, and I know, I want, and we're gonna, we're gonna get out by four, I promise, but I do have to share this amazing story, and you'll especially enjoy this. So on Thursday evening, President Taylor and I were at the, the Beyond Van Gogh exhibit. And one of our students, Cooper Sandoval, was there to read the proclamation that, that the mayor had, had given, and he's an artist himself. Well, as it turns out, Cooper's mom, Annie and his sister, were actually at the Art of Childhood Event, and she said to me, Cooper's artwork is over in the silent auction. Well, you know, as a superintendent, you get to go to a lot of auctions. And, and my husband has said to me long ago, no more SPA certificates, no more gift baskets, you need to find something else to put your money into. So I, of course, always invest in student art. And so Cooper had some pieces of art there, some of which are hanging in my home now, are hanging in my, and let me just say, Washoe's got talent.
Oh, yeah.
And Cooper Sandoval has real talent. So I was on the, doing the bidding, and I was going back and forth, and finally, like, I'm just doing the top bid. So I bid it outright to get his artwork, as I'm checking out with Trustee Smith, a gentleman says to me, oh, you're the one I was bidding against. And I said, yeah, sorry. And he said, and I, I think, I won't say the, the final bidding, but he said, I'll, I, I really wanted those, I mean, they're, they're really good. I said, I know. And he said, I'll give you a $1,500 donation if you wanna let me have them. And I, you know, you know, donation to the school's always good, and he said, $2,500.
Oh, no way.
I know, they are that good, by the way, they are that good.
But he won a, he won a taxi top.
Yeah.
He raised his hand down.
Yeah, like, hash down. And, and of cour, obviously, it would have been a donation. And I, I struggled, because I know the donation would have been great, but I said, I'm sorry. I said, but I'm the new superintendent, and this is my first student artwork purchase as a superintendent, and I actually know the artist, and so I'm gonna hold on to these, I'm sorry. But if you'd like to make a donation anyway, you can do it. But, but I shared that, and I actually shared that with Cooper's mom and himself, and it was great. And so I am the proud owner of some Super Cooper Sandoval originals that I'm proudly displaying.
Bring them.
What?
Show and tell.
Oh, absol, oh, yeah, they're fabulous.
Remember, he won a taxi top.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's amazing. Yeah, remember his name someday. And then just two other really quick things, then I'm done. We are officially in sports season, I'm not saying just football season, because there's all kinds of sports going on, and I'm gonna do my best to get to as many different events as I can, but I'm gonna kick it off this Friday at HUG, it's the field dedication night, so that's exciting. And they had their first win of the season last week, which I know for HUG, they didn't have a great season last year, so they're starting out the year strong. We're proud, we're excited. And finally, our first town hall will be next week, the 30th, at 5:30 at Reno High School. I know that Trustee Smith and Vice President Nicolet will be joining me. Looking forward to the community coming out and engaging in some conversation, asking some questions, sharing some ideas. So all of this long-winded superintendent's report is to say, it's been a glorious start to the 22-23 school year, and it's only gonna get better from here, so thank you, everybody.
All right. Thank you. A lot of good things happening, and thanks to all of our colleagues for being out and about and being ambassadors for the school district. It, it matters, it means an awful lot, so. Fantastic. All right, JJ, I think we have a closing public comments.
John Eppolito.
Mr. Eppolito, welcome back, sir.
Thank you. My name is John Eppolito from Protect Nevada Children, and I wanted to mention these surveys, these two surveys that are done in Washoe County School District. Jennifer McWilliams wrote an article about the illegal social and emotional data collection, and she specifically talks about Castle, and I'll submit this for the record in the board, she specifically talks about Castle. Most of you remember maybe that Castle was one of the people that Washoe County School Districts invited into schools years ago as an experiment. There were like six or seven experimental districts in the country. So according to Jennifer, they're illegally collecting data on kids. And she also talks about the statewide longitudinal data system, that's the one that Nevada renamed SANE. And what she says is, the S, quote, "The SCL data collection is creating a psychological profile for students," end quote. And some of us have known this for a while. Then one of the, the surveys is the Panorama Survey, that's the Attorney General Garland's son-in-law. And this, this entity is very problematic, in my opinion. And, and they're bragging, on their homepage of Panorama, they're bragging, quote, "On a visit to Washoe County School District in Nevada, you might see students facilitating sessions called SLIME about gender differences in their district's social and emotional data," end quote. Why are students doing that? That's something that PhDs should be doing, not students. And we've asked the school district if parents were notified that those gender sessions were gonna take place, and we haven't heard back, so maybe you guys know, maybe you don't wanna say, I have no idea. The other survey that's given in our schools is the State Survey, the School Climate Survey. Both of these surveys, students have to log in to take. For a long time, you were saying that all that data was private and, and it was confidential. And then at the last meeting, on the counselors, that entity that hires all those counselors, they have access to this data. And evidently, we've been being lied to for a while. And Castle and Panorama definitely have an alignment. Those are two entities I would not want within 100 miles of my kids, and my kids don't do any of this stuff. You probably know, Ivy. And as far as Panorama goes, Wyoming is the first state to get rid of Panorama from schools. Maybe Washoe County could follow and put the energy, effort and money into something else besides collecting psychological profiles on these kids. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Eppolito.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other public comment, JJ?
The board received an email from Joe Morabito.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, that concludes our meeting. Our, hmm? Oh, sorry. All right, that concludes our meeting. Our next meeting is, our next regular meeting of the Board of Trustees is September 13th at 2:00 p.m. Thank you, everybody.